The meeting is now live.
All right, welcome everybody. I would like to call this Monday, June 28th, regular meeting of Kimberly City Council to order, held here on the homelands of the Tenaha peoples. We have a couple of things we don't normally have tonight, a public hearing. We're going to be getting into that first, so heads up. Do we have any late agenda items this evening?
There are two late agenda items, Mr. Mayor. There is a letter from Richard Dick related to the public hearing. And there is a petition that was received that 3:05 this afternoon. And we prepare a staff report for you related to that as it was time sensitive.
All right, awesome. Thanks, Maurice. Just before we do the adoption of the agenda, we'll start with the ministerial order, which allows us to conduct this meeting, a combination of in council and online. Counselor Goodwin moves and Counselor McBain seconds. All those in favor, that motion is carried. With the addition of the couple of late items, mover to adopt the agenda, please. Counselor McBain, thank you, and Counselor Roberts seconds. All those in favor, that motion is carried. All right, next up, we have the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on June 14th. Counselor Roberts moves, Counselor Kiddo seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, that motion is carried. All right, so we're going to start the evening out with a, with a public hearing. And this relates to zoning amendment by law 2687. Bear with me while I read, while I read the statutory statement with regard to the public hearing. So this evening, given that we are just council in chamber tonight, we will be hearing submissions by telephone. If anyone listening via the YouTube stream that would like to share their comments on these bylaws, please call now. The number is 800-741-7180. And when prompted, enter meeting number 1870741597. When asked for a password, simply enter pound or the hashtag symbol. Once you're connected, you will, you will be able to hear the meeting, but will be muted on hold until it's your turn to speak. If you're listening to the live stream while on the phone, please make sure to mute or turn the volume down on the live stream to cause, to avoid causing audio feedback. The, the live stream is not in sync with the live meeting. You may let us know that you would like to speak by entering nine, beg your pardon, by entering star nine on your phone to raise your hand. And you will know when it's your turn to speak when you hear that your microphone has been muted. We ask everyone to be patient during this hearing as we are moving slowly to allow ample time for switching between speakers. And as I just mentioned, there is a minor delay between the live stream and the telephone audio. So please be patient. Any person who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be given an opportunity to be heard. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views known. Members of council may ask questions of you during your presentation for clarification. However, the main function of council members at this hearing is to listen to the comments presented and not debate the merits of the proposed bylaw or any comments presented. You will be given five minutes for your presentation. I will call for presentation three times before closing the hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, members of council cannot take any further input regarding the proposed amending bylaw. And after the public hearing is concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. Thanks very much for your cooperation and patience for this process. So we have a public hearing for bylaw 2687. It's being convened pursuant to ministerial order M139 issued May 1st, 2020, and section six, pardon me, sections 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider the proposed zoning amendment by law 2687. We'll begin with a brief overview of the bylaw and then call for submissions on those from the phone. So Troy, can I, can I ask you to give us an overview of exactly what we're doing with this bylaw, please?
Can do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Proposed zoning amendment by law 2687 will amend the R10 zone regulations to allow for a mixture of multifamily dwellings, which could represent, could be represented by townhouse style, apartment style, or other building types with three or more units in a building. And also allows for two family or duplex dwellings with provision for accessory dwellings and carriage home dwellings. The proposed bylaw will also amend the zoning map and the specific zoning for the property located at 595 305th Avenue from a mix of, the current mix of R2, R10, and RC2 zones to a mix of only R10 and RC2 zones. So that map amendment is really to make a correction from, from many years ago, I guess, to where the zoning wasn't, wasn't following the parcel boundary. So we, there was a portion of the existing parcel that was included in the R10 zone, but happened to be a portion of the parcel that it's not, it's on the creek bank and not suitable for, for development. So this zoning map amendment portion will, will only zone the portion of the property suitable for development in the, in the R10 zone. And the, and the balance of the property will, will be in the RC2 zones. And otherwise, it's a series of text amendments to the R10 zoning rules. Like, like I said, to allow for a wider mix of uses and some setback changes and no, no change in height or anything from what's presently allowed.
All right, thanks so much for that, Troy. Before we begin with the submissions, we will acknowledge receiving any written submissions we've received in advance. Maurice, can you confirm?
The only submission received was the one added as a late item.
A late item. All right, thank you very much. Copies of that submission have in fact been provided to council. Okay. Those providing presentation will be given five minutes for the presentation, and I will call three times before closing the hearing. So first call for submissions. Moderator will unmute you to let you know when it's your turn. And please begin by clearly stating your name and address and then present comments. Maurice?
There is nobody on the phone, Mr. Mayor.
All right, hearing none, I will call for submissions a second time.
Still nobody.
And just before I call for a third time, I'm going to restate the phone number. Just in case it, it wasn't written down the first time, and that number is 800-741-7180. And the access code or the meeting number is 1870741597. When prompted for a password, just simply press the pound or hashtag key. So we will give that a moment to see if we have any callers coming in, and then we'll move on to third and final call.
We still don't have anybody on the phone.
Okay, with that, I will call for submissions a third and final time. And hearing none, with no further submissions, the public hearing for proposed bylaw 2687 is now closed. All right, let's move on to, move on to bylaws. So first up this evening, we have the zoning amendment by law 2691, which is for 99 Fernie Street. And the, the resolution is that council approve first and second reading of the bylaw as stated. And that the, I think I can do both of these, Maurice, can I not?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, and further that the, that an electronic public hearing for a bylaw 2681 be scheduled for the regular meeting of council on Monday, August 16th at 7:00 PM. Counselor Dalla moves and Counselor Oakley seconds. Discussion. Do you, do you have any comments at all, Troy, to start out discussion?
Yeah, I'll provide a brief overview if that, if that helps. The proposed bylaw 2691 will rezone a portion of the existing property at 99 Fernie Street from the R2 single and two family residential zone to the R12 multiple family residential zone. So there's a, this bylaw is really simply a map amendment to amend a portion of that property comprising approximately 0.54 hectares or 1.33 acres. And that is presently proposed as, as, you know, two, two separate blocks or two separate parcels, I guess, comprising that area and both of which front directly onto Fernie Street in between 5th and 8th Avenue there. There's a detailed overview attached to the, to the staff report here, provided by the applicant of the overall proposal. And as well, it's not attached to this report, but it is attached to the agenda under this report section is the, the overview from the applicant from their initial public engagement process that they held earlier this month between June 2nd and June 16th, including a live virtual session that they, that they held on, on June 9th. So the summary of that feedback is also attached to the, to the staff report here. The proposed amendments, the development plan at this, at this stage is to accommodate the development of four parcels, each with a five unit townhouse for a total of 20 townhouse units overall. And the zoning of the remainder of that subject property is not proposed to change at this time. It will remain in the R2 zone. And that's, the overall parcel is just over 20 hectares or 49 acres in size. So at this time, staff is recommending that council initiate the bylaw review process by approving first and second reading and to schedule the public hearing for, for further feedback from community members on this proposed bylaw. Schedule that public hearing to be held at, at the Monday, August 16th meeting. I think I'll leave it at that, and if there's any other questions from council.
All right, thank you, Troy. Questions? Go ahead, Kyle.
Troy, you said that the parcel is 49 acres? Is that correct?
Yes, that, yeah, that's approximately that size overall, yes. But the, the portion that's being proposed to be rezoned is, is only about 1.3 acres.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Troy, one of the concerns that's come up with the various correspondence that we've come through is the access to Townsite, having one entrance and exit out of Townsite. What kind of population increase would we need to demonstrate before we would need a second exit out of Townsite?
Good question. I'm not sure that we have a, a limit necessarily or a maximum size of population up there. I think over, over time, the population in that neighborhood is, has kind of ebbed and flowed over, over the years. Back to when the mine was operating, there was probably a lot more traffic coming and going. There's been some, some growth certainly in residential units in that area. And there's, there's more proposed. This, this parcel itself has been designated for future development for quite some time. And there's, and there's a few others in the Townsite neighborhood or adjacent to it that, that are, have been designated for future development. So we don't have a max number or anything at this time. Council will recall some major upgrades that were, happened to 4th Avenue over a couple of summers in the, in the recent years. And, and part of that was to, you know, make sure that that road is, has some long-term capacity and, and ability to handle some growth there that's anticipated in that neighborhood. There is some alternatives for emergency egress or access if needed as well. But, but, or maybe just emergency planning has identified to redirect if needed in a case of emergency, redirect traffic down the hill and out of that neighborhood in some different ways.
Counselor McBain?
Well, Troy, thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. Actually, Daryl and I were talking about this. As somebody who grew up in Townsite, you know, that's always been something I've thought about. And I, I'm wondering if there's a way that we could, I don't know, make it a little bit more widely known about that, that emergency egress if, if need be. Because I think a lot of people are just unaware of, of the potential use of that property if we need to. So maybe that's something we could, we could look at. Just a general comment on, on some of the items that were, or some of the concerns that people brought up. You know, I, I understand, you know, people don't want to see change. And this is going to sound very similar to the, the other speech that I gave, or not speech, I tribe, I guess you could call it, from a couple of weeks ago. You know, we, we got some really, some really, some really heartfelt, some thoughtful letters about, you know, how, how much that area means to them. And, and I get that. But, you know, the one thing I will say is especially at the edge of a town where there's, where there's a potential to, to, to kind of tack on and the, the services are already there. I mean, it's kind of the, it's kind of the assumption that at least any place that I've lived, if I'm living on the edge, you know, there's, there's a, there's a likelihood or a chance that something could go in there. My grandparents lived on Fernie Street, right at the, at the, at the corner there, Fernie and 5th. And I've, I, I never understood why it took this long actually to get to where we are right now. So, I mean, and this is an example. Sullivan Landing, you know, again, that was one of my stomping grounds as a kid. Sullivan Landing is a nice little development now, and it's, and it's really alleviating some of the, the need that we have in town. This is much smaller than that. You know, this is a much smaller impact than that. And it's meeting some of the multi-unit need that we have, that we're looking for in town. Now, again, is, are these solutions perfect? Yeah, you know, it's up for debate. But, I mean, to me, it just seems like the, the inquiries that we're getting or the concerns that we're getting are, yes, we need, yes, the town needs this. We need multi-unit, we need, you know, whatever it is, fill in the blank, but I just don't want it near me. That, that's kind of what it seems to be coming down to. And I, and I, I understand that. But I just feel that if we're trying to meet the needs of, of, of all of our residents, and we've, I think, heard pretty loud and clear that, you know, and I don't like the word affordable, but we'll just use it for this, this space. Affordable housing is badly needed here. And here's another, you know, thing to help us out with that. So, yeah, I just, I just wanted to provide that commentary that, you know, we're, I think we're trying to do the best we can. And, and I, we understand, at least I understand, the concerns that people have. And it doesn't mean that we're discounting them.
Thanks for that, Counselor McBain. Counselor Roberts?
Yes, I just wanted to add a little bit to what you'd said about the egress area. I think that would be a really good idea. I mean, I'm aware of at least three, three places you can get down off the hill. And if we could make that public, that, that you could actually do that, I think that would alleviate some concerns. The other piece that I'd like to bring up is that the, the area up to Fernie Avenue from, from the 600 block, 700 block, 800 block, 5th, 6th, and 8th Avenue were built in 1950. Nothing has been built since then. And what people don't seem to realize, well, I guess with the exception of Sullivan Landing, is that this is a city that is three blocks wide and three miles long. And we have actually more miles of hiking trails and bicycling trails than we do streets. So when we have somebody that's willing to try to build something on with the existing infrastructure that's going to serve some of the people that are heretofore unable to buy a large framed home, this is a real opportunity for Kimberly as opposed to a negative. I think there's so many good reasons for this to be able to go ahead. Everybody has their unanswered concern about wastewater and about whether or not we have enough water. Let me tell you that the engineers at the city are well aware of whether or not we can service these things and would no way be going forward with this if this wasn't, if this didn't have possibilities and potential. So I think we need to kind of like calm the rhetoric a little bit and trust that your city engineers who've studied for years to figure these things out have a clue what they're doing. And the man who owns this piece of property is going to build something that fits our official community plan for smaller footprint housing.
Thanks, Counselor Roberts. Go ahead, Kat.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. The first thing is that we're just doing two readings of the bylaw, and then we're going to have a public hearing. And it would be inappropriate to say too much about how we feel about this proposal till we hear from the public officially. So I think we should probably keep most of our comments until that later meeting or till after that later meeting. But I will say that I'm a little concerned because the proponent has already done a public input process. And the summary report that council received isn't really worth very much to me. There's no quantification in it. All it says is several people said this, several people said that, several people said that. We are now going to ask people to send us their feedback on the proposal. And we need you to understand that what you told the developer, you may have to tell us too if you want to get it through to us because we may not have all the detail. But, so that's, I just want to make clear about that. The other thing I'll say is that we're only looking at that very small parcel of land at the end of Fernie Street. The very large areas that are already zoned for more housing development beyond that aren't on the table right now. There are many pieces of land like that all around Kimberly. We have hundreds of hectares of land available for housing all around town. I kind of like us to do a little growth management discussion at some point to try to figure out from an infrastructure, a highways, an ecological perspective, where should we focus development if anywhere, when you're looking at big parcels like that? But that's another matter. Sorry.
Go ahead, Jase.
No, and Kat, I'm glad you brought that up because that was, that was another thing I wanted to, to, to discuss and kind of got lost in the haze is, is I agree. I think, I think we need to analyze where we are, or think about and, and put some analyst, analysis on where we want to go as far as, as far as growth is concerned. I, we've brought it up several times in the past. We don't, I, I don't feel like we should just grow for the sake of growth. I mean, there, there needs to be some well-thought-out, well-thought-out methodology behind it. So I wholeheartedly agree with, with Counselor Goodwin. And I apologize if I was getting emotional on, on receiving some of the, some of the, some of the input that we've already had. And I also agree that it would be nice to have some, some more, well, some quantifiable data and some, just some more substance to the, to the feedback. Go ahead.
I could just jump in. I, I want to assure people that if you sent a letter to council, it's on the record. We've got it. If you talk to the developers' open house, we may or may not get your feedback. So it's those people that may need to attend the public hearing that we're, we're going to have.
Okay, so we will have the public hearing in August. I guess I just, in conclusion, will make a couple of comments. We do have some data. It's called the Housing Study that we spent a fair amount of money on to, you know, get analysis of what, you know, of what our needs are going to be. And it produced a pretty good snapshot of kind of where we're at and kind of the direction we're going in. The other comment I will make is that, you know, with all due respect to the hundreds of hectares, there are decisions that previous councils have made when, when private landowners came to town and had purchased land and if not yet, developed it. All, all of that land is in play from, from previous, you know, previous council decisions. So it's not like we're sitting here with, you know, in chaos, not understanding exactly what we're doing or how we're doing it. The chaotic part of it right now is there are not enough places for people to live. And we need to have housing built. And we've got a number of these that are on the, on the agenda right now, of which Fernie Street is but one. So stay tuned, a public hearing on this one coming in March. Counselor Oakley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just have one comment. Who's our liaison to the Trail Society? So Counselor Dalla, so one of the things that I, I think we have a public hearing that's going to come up for this. The Trail Society Board should be made aware of this development potentially. And they should be invited to participate in the public hearing. If they find out more information from the developer, what the potential impact is on trails.
And so it's called the public hearing. We don't invite people to the public hearing. We announce it and they choose to attend the public hearing. So I would encourage either yourself or other members of council to let the Trail Society and anybody else know that may have an interest in the
Well, we have a liaison.
Development.
That's all I'm asking.
Last comment, then we're moving on.
I'll spread the word. Just one, one small piece here that people aren't necessarily aware of as much information as we have. Speaking to the school comments directly is, we're not the school board. The school board is aware of our population increase and is looking at their own options. But we have no control over that. And Lindsay Park, as some people have noted, is, there are quite a few people. But, you know, that, that's a, a solution for someone else to have for us.
Thank you for that last comment. We'll call the question on first and second reading. All those in favor, motion is carried. Okay, next up, we have the municipal and regional district tax bylaw. It's MRDT as it's being affectionately known, which is the 2% hotel tax that provides money for our marketing. So the, the resolution is that council grant first, second, and third readings to the municipal and regional district tax bylaw number 2693. Mover, please. Counselor Oakley, thank you, and Counselor Kiddo seconds. Discussion. Jim, can you give us, give us the skinny on this? I believe it's a renewal, correct?
2703.
Hello, Jim.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was speaking with Chris on the phone.
Okay, MRDT, the 2% renewal. Can you give us the summary, please?
Yes, so just as, as a bit of a history on the MRDT, we've been collecting it in the city of Kimberly since 2007 at a rate of 2%. When we first started collecting it, that was the, that's the max that we could collect under the provincial legislation. In 2015, that legislation was changed, allowing us to collect 3%. And before the 2016 renewal, tourists in Kimberly had actually received approval of the TK Board, and there was approval received from the RDE as well, Regional District East Cutney, to go to the 3%. But when the application was submitted, it was submitted for the, the 2% at that time. The tourism in Kimberly was again preparing an application for a new five-year term starting in 2022 at 3%, but they weren't able to get the support of the tourism accommodators to, to go with the 3%. So the, the application being submitted is again at the 2%. And just to give council an idea of the amount that's collected through the MRDT, the, the largest amount that's been collected was just over $150,000. That was last year. And that amount dropped significantly with, in 2020. Sorry, 2019 was the 150,000. And 2020, it dropped back to 98 just due to the impact of COVID. Just for council's information, staff also sent the Regional District East Cutney a letter asking for their support to collect the MRDT within the city of Kimberly boundary, as that's a requirement of the application as well.
All right, so Nigel?
Thanks. Firstly, I'd just like to thank Jim and Scott for working so hard to, to get these applications in. There's a lot of work to there, to, to be done. We were running pretty late on the 3% application. And you guys were really there for us to, to push this through council to get the, the bylaws written. I'm very disappointed that we are actually only applying for a 2%. I'm very disappointed that we are actually only applying for a 2% and not 3%. I thought coming forward to this application in the last year of talks with the board. That we had consensus on moving to a 3% model, but unfortunately, as we hit the deadline, we found that that wasn't quite true. The MRDT is collected by accommodators, but it's for the benefit of the entire tourism economy. Unfortunately, I think the concentration of ownership of the accommodation in town is probably an issue that was not really foreseen by the province. Because it just means that individual players can, can really affect the, the applications here. On that, it's not unusual for other agencies to collect tax. You know, we all pay our GST for various reasons and we don't complain about collecting that. So it kind of missed me a little bit why the accommodators have so much power of the application process when it's for the entire community. That being said, we did move, we were wanting to move to the 3% rate because we were worried about the financial sustainability of the organization going forward as. City contributions and the other contributions have started to decrease over the last couple of years. Spoken to John Hamilton, our executive director, he's confident that we can be sustainable on the 2% model. But we're going to have to tighten our bells and sharpen the pencils quite some. I think we spent the last year or more modernizing Tourism Kimberly, bringing it up into the modern area from what was a pretty. Pretty small operation in a small resort municipality. I'd like to thank John for all the work that he's done. We spent a lot of time and a lot of efforts in renewing our website. Updating all of our media assets, etc., which I think is a very good investment of the money so far. And moving forward, that means that we can really direct most of the budget towards marketing, which is the desire, of course, of many of the members on the board. So yeah, that's it. So thanks, everyone, for considering this file.
Yeah, thanks for those comments, Counsel, Counsel Kittle. Further, Counsel Oakley, then Counsel Goodwin.
I just got a question for Counsel Kittle. So there's. Accommodators have rejected the 3% TK. So there's a disconnect there. So maybe there isn't a sense of good values. I'm just wondering, is there a process in play to sort through?
That's a very good question, Counsel Oakley. Yeah, I think that we need to prove as a society, as a, as a, as. As our society of what the value is for membership. And that's what we're going to be working on moving forward here is widening our membership and proving that meant value. I think the best thing we can do is succeed and, and, and hopefully have, have others join us in the future.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I was just going to inject a note of optimism because I, I think Kimberly's been discovered. And even without more money, I think tourism's likely going to do fairly well in Kimberly. By all of judging from comments like people I see.
Thank you for that. Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks for that, Jim. Okay, next up, we have the proposed, proposed road closure bylaws, 2667 and 2668. Which pertain to the properties down around the Purcell, Purcell Collegiate proposed site. And the resolutions on the table are that council adopt. Highway closure and dedication removal bylaw 2667 is attached to the report dated June 28th from the manager of planning. And we have two motions. We'll do these in two. So that would be the first, the first motion. Mover please. Counsel Kittle, thank you. Counsel Dallum seconds. Troy, can you take us through this, please?
Yes, I'll probably speak to both bylaws just because they're, they're, they're fairly intertwined, I guess. So council recall from, from last summer, last fall, there was when these bylaws were originally before council and under review. So these relate to. Proposed closure of, of some road areas that have never been improved or, or developed as, as roads and. The end result, if, if these bylaws are, are approved by council in the end. These closed roads will be exchanged and consolidated with adjacent private lands. And in exchange for that, the city receives some other road dedication areas. And some other lands to accommodate city infrastructure and, and development needs. This, this comes back from a land exchange agreement that council approved back in June of 2020. Between the city and Purcell International Education, Purcell Collegiate and West Castle Land Developments. So those bylaws were previously considered by council. Notification was sent out to adjacent property owners and residents. There was some feedback received. Council did actually follow staff's recommendations at the time to, to amend those bylaws. And notice was sent out again on the amended bylaws back in September of last year. And the, the reason why these had not come back to council until now is. There's some other, other parameters around the land exchange agreement that the parties were waiting for some more progress on before the, before the bylaws. Should, should be, should be approved. And, and what I mean by that is the, the adoption of the bylaws triggers some, some further actions in the land exchange and, and sort of starts the clock ticking on closure of that land exchange agreement. So that was, you know, mutual agreement to, to postpone adoption there until now. So. The parties are ready to move forward on that and looking for the, the road closure bylaws to be adopted. And so there's been no, no, no further changes. We did have some, some further comments received back in September, but. And at this time, staff is not recommending any, any further changes to the bylaws.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Questions on the first of the motions, counsel? Hearing none, we will call that question. All those in favor? That motion is carried. And the second resolution is that council adopt highway closure and dedication removal bylaw 2668. As attached to the report from the manager of planning. Mover please. Counsel Roberts, thank you. And Counsel Kittle seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor? Is that a discussion or in favor?
Both.
Well. You, you can't do both, so let's have the discussion first.
Just a request for higher resolution pictures next time, Troy. I just had a challenge. Matching Google Maps with the pieces there. That's all it was.
Okay. Further, all those in favor? The motion is carried. All right. Next up, we have zoning amendment bylaw 2687, which is the, the R10 zone bylaw. And that the motion is that council approve third reading of the bylaw. Mover please. Counsel Kittle, thank you. And Counselor Dallum seconds. Do we have any further discussion? Troy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to provide further information on a couple of things. One, as Northern reports, at the time of writing, we had not received approval of the bylaw from Ministry of Transportation. However, since, since the writing of that report, we have, we have received that approval. So if council wishes, we're clear to proceed on, on third reading and adoption of the bylaw. And as, as you mentioned earlier in the meeting, the public hearing was held. There was no, no submissions during the hearing. But we did have the one written submission from an adjacent property owner and resident. And in, in review of the comments submitted there. I, you know, I think they, the, the. The submitter there has raised some, 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 some concerns or, or. Issues to be addressed and I think that those can and will be resolved as, as further development plan. Is refined here and, and, and any development on the site here will, will be subject to development permit and subdivision and, and. Of course, building permits as we go along. So I think that those issues that were raised will, will certainly be addressed in, in the subsequent steps here of, of any development on the property.
All right.
We stand by our, our original recommendation.
All right. Thank you for that, Troy. Any further comments? Hearing none? Is that a comment or a vote?
No, I would, I would make a one comment and that is, as Troy has pointed out, this still has to go through the development permit process. And as one of the comments we received in the letter was the zoning allows for a variety of options to happen. The site was previously zoned for a lot of housing units. I think 52 was the maximum that was going to be on there. And we need housing units. And so when the development, I just wanted to sort of send out into the ether. That development permits that have more units are better than development permits that have fewer, or applications rather. So. Just saying. We, we do have the authority to approve, approve the development permit. It would be nice to see a bit of the density. That was originally there. There. I know it won't be anything like what we had originally thought, but.
Yeah, it's. In the process where the zoning is being reviewed, there are details that are requested or that members of the public would like to see. That haven't been given consideration yet. It's not that point in the process. And as Troy has pointed out, we have several gates that have to be passed through where we have opportunity to take into account. You know, lots of feedback and a resolution of issues that may crop up between now and then. Okay, we'll call the question then. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. And secondary, the next motion is that council adopt bylaw 2687. Mover please. Counsel Dallum, thank you very much. Counsel Goodwin seconds. All those in favor? That motion is carried. All right. And the last of the development items this evening is the development variance permit for 165 Bank Street. And the resolution is that council instruct the corporate officer to issue notice to neighbors of the intent to vary. Could I have a mover please? Counsel Roberts, thank you very much. Counsel Kittle seconds. Discussion. Troy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this property here on, on Bank Street, council may recall. Sorry, the, oh yeah, 2018 was the timing. There was a. Sorry, actually, there was, it wasn't council, it was the board of variants, considered a variance for garage in the rear yard. To vary the side yard setback that was approved by the board of variants that, that garage has since, since been constructed. There, there was previously a house on this property. That had some, some non-conforming sighting. That house has actually been relocated within town. It's been moved to an address in Kimbrook Crescent and is now. Set up and functioning there as, as a, as a residence there. And the owners of the property are proposing to build a new house on this property. But given the, it, it's a, it's a very good sized property. However, a good portion of the. Kind of west and north sides of the property are a pretty steep hillside. And so they're, they're really wanting to kind of maximize the space in the rear yard area behind the proposed new house. Or between the proposed new house and, and the garage at the, at the back of the site. So they're proposing two variances to, to achieve that. One is to reduce the, the front yard setback from six meters down to one and a half meters. And to decrease the exterior side yard setback, which is adjacent to, to the lane on the side of the property. Reduce that requirement from three meters to 1.6 meters. And that, that is actually following pretty closely to what the sighting of the, of the previous house was. So. I, I think for the most part, it's not going to look too different for adjacent residents and owners, but. I guess we'll see what kind of feedback we receive there. There, this portion of Bank Street here is, is, is kind of a dead end street. Dead ends at the hillside. Basically, there's really just a couple of houses on, on other side of this, this block of, of Bank Street there. So. At this stage, we're recommending that council authorize us to send notice to neighbors and, and we'll be back to the next meeting if, if with any feedback received.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Discussion. Right. Hearing none, we will call the question on notice to neighbors. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, under new business, we have several items this evening. The first up is the 2021 annual road rehabilitation program. Specifically, the tender award. The motion is that council authorize the contract for the 2021 annual road rehab program to Terrace Construction BA Blacktop. Of Cranbrook in an amount not to exceed $338,947.61 plus taxes. And further, that council authorize the CIO or his appointed designate to execute the contract documents associated with the award. And further, that council authorize the expenditure of the remaining budget funds. Of $353,703 annual road rehab plus $120,000 civic center parking lot rehabilitation, leaving. $338,947.61, of which 141,000 will be utilized for Kimbrook Crescent. Et cetera, as you can see in the remainder of that. It's a little bit of a matrix that I won't bother reading out. At the end of the day, it's for $334,000. And you can see the, the list in the agenda of the, the various roads that are to be rehabbed this year. Editorial comment for me. I'm really glad to see Swan have Hill on that.
And I will start out with. Providing council with a, that the remaining funds. I found a, a math error in there and the remaining funds will actually be 122,703. So there's a little, a little bit extra in there that, that was unexpected. So about an additional 14,700. So it was a bit of a surprise for us this year. The, the successful bidder was. Was very aggressive in their bidding. So we, we got some very good pricing on asphalt paving this year. With that said, we'd, we'd plan to, what we thought was going to be the spend on the budget and with the savings that came in, we're, we're certainly looking to. Add some locations, as you can see in this report. To get a little bit more done with the dollars that have been provided for paving this year. I guess with that, I welcome any questions on the report.
All right. Thank you. Counsel McBane, then Counsel Oakley.
Yeah, I think you kind of already answered it, Chris, but I, I'm just assuming with that. Any extra money that's left over, we would just take. Whatever slotted for the, the, the next year, right? And, and just move it up the priority list and, and hit that. Is that kind of the methodology you're? Taking?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we always have a list of, of places that we would like to get to based on the, the asphalt report we received a couple of years ago. And some of the other works that we have ongoing in the community. So certainly we were, we've already been looking around at some locations that we think will be. Very good priority spots to catch if we don't use too much of this money in any unexpecteds in the contract.
Right. Perfect. Thanks, Chris.
Absolutely.
Just a question for you, Chris. The Swan Hill, is there much? What's the timelines on that? Is there much prep work for that project, for that piece of it?
Yeah, the piece that we're targeting is, is essentially from the bin wall at the bottom of the hill, the top end of that bin wall up to Diamond Street. It's really starting to fall apart quite rapidly and. What we were hoping it was going to last a little bit longer, but it's not. The, the bin wall section, the lower piece is, is part of a capital project in a future year. Quite soon. And if, if the budget holds up, we may look to add in a piece of the Diamond Street that. Is kind of the finishing touches there on that.
Counsel McBane. Sorry, Chris, I just had one more question. Um. I was just, I was just curious about, about Swan Hill. Is there? Are there any key infrastructure pieces in there that? That are slated for upgrade? I, I just don't know off the top of my head that. I, I just didn't want to get into the, you know, laying down some asphalt and then having to. You know, rip something up and, and add some pipes later. I assume no, I just wanted to, to clarify.
Yeah, absolutely. Not a problem. And that particular stretch of road only contains storm pipe. So that's the only piece of infrastructure under the road that we're concerned with at this time and it's actually in quite good shape.
Okay, thanks. Further?
This is just a general comment that, well, two part. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate all the work you guys have continued to do. The other part is, you know, this is a prime example of something that I've been saying. For quite a while that, you know. If someone can bid aggressively like this, we're not going to have less work for them. We're just going to get more caught up. And that is so appreciated right now.
All right. Thanks, Counsel Dallum. Further comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, next up, we have the, the approval of the twenty twenty annual report. And that's that council approved the report as attached in the report from the corporate officer. Counselor McBane moves. Counselor Kiddo seconds. We've talked about this a fair amount. Jim, are there any further comments you would like to make before we call the question?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think that council is, is pretty well aware of what's contained in the document. There, there's a lot of financial information in there. The financial statements who were approved by council back in May are included along with a bunch of statistical information that has five year comparatives on, on a bunch of financial benchmarks. I think the, the highlights on the financial statements this year were just the continued improvement to the city's financial position, which is assets over liabilities. It improved by about six point six million dollars this year, the majority of that in cash. A lot of that results from council's strategy of divesting ourselves of some of our noncore assets so that we can reinvest in our fundamental infrastructure. So the, the big one in twenty twenty was the sale of Riverside Campground. So that was a, that was a big one that added to the reserves. We, we've got about twenty million dollars in reserves now that we can use to invest in city infrastructure. We've got some big projects coming up in the upcoming years that, that really need that money. So it's good to see the financial position where it is. We're in, I think probably the best shape we've been in for a, a lot of years.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Jim. Any further comments, counsel? Hearing none, call the, call the question. All those in favor? The motion is carried. And the next resolution is that council direct staff to submit the twenty twenty City of Kimberly annual report to the Government Finance Officers Association for review under the Canadian Award for Financial Reporting Program. Counselor Dallum moves and Counselor Kiddo seconds. All those in favor? The motion is carried. All right, next up, we have the twenty twenty statement of financial information. And the resolution is that the statement of financial information, better known as SOPHIE, in the form attached to the chief financial officer's report be approved. Mover please. Counselor Dallum, thank you. Counselor McBane seconds. Do you want to make a comment on this as well, Jim?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, again, the bulk of this document is comprised of financial statements. This is the, I guess, the third time that they've been in front of council for some type of formal approval. Also attached to the SOPHIE are the statement or immuno, immuneration and expenses and the scheduled payments to suppliers for goods and services. But, but again, I think the, the good news story again in SOPHIE is just the, the continued improvement to the, the city's financial position in the statements as presented.
All right, comments? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor? That motion is carried. And finally, under new business tonight, we have, we have the check run in the amount of. Oh, I checked that off already. We're going straight to, straight to check run. Sorry about that. I got a little, little trigger happy with my pen. So the, this is the second last item in, under new business tonight is the addition of a public washroom in the Platsill. And the motion on the table is that council receive the report, addition of the public washroom within the Platsill from the senior manager of operations. If I have a mover please. Counselor Goodwin, thank you. And Counselor Dallum seconds. Discussion. Chris, do you want to lead us down the path?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Council had asked for some information about the selection of the location for the herbaloo in the Platsill, a public washroom facility. The location that we've chosen in the Platsill, as you can see in the report, is based on the extremely limiting opportunities for that facility. It needs to be connected to all utilities and there are only a, a couple of locations in the Platsill that are configured in such a way that the underground infrastructure supports that. So it leaves us with very few options there. I do understand it's been fairly controversial in the community with the removal of a couple of trees there. I would suggest that, you know, once the herbaloo is installed, that landscaping works and, and some trees will be added back to that location. Obviously, they won't be of the same size of, as the ones that are currently there, but we feel that it certainly can be made to look very attractive and be an integral part of the, of the Platsill.
All right, thank you, Chris. Counselor McBane?
Thanks, Chris. Well, first, first thing I think is kind of silly is the, I, I'm all for, I'm all for petitions. I really appreciate the fact that everybody signed the petition, but I take a little issue with us, with the implication that we're trying to turn Kimberly into concrete jungle. That, that really kind of struck me as, as ridiculous. However, I do, I do, I do sympathize and I, and somewhat agree with the, the people that signed the petition. Chris, my question to you is, it seems like you're, the, the, the secondary choice to, or the secondary potential solution, putting it over just past Stonefire there would require the, the removal of, of the cuckoo clock. And I, I struggling to try to understand why the cuckoo clock would have to be removed, why there couldn't be some space made either behind it or whatever. I understand, you know, I understand some of the underground constraints you're dealing with, but I don't know why it has to be a binary decision to completely remove the cuckoo clock in order to put the, the washroom in. To me, it seems like this is a, a small enough facility that's going in there where it could be either tucked in behind or something like that to, to accommodate that space. So I just wanted to get your comment on that.
Yeah, for sure. There are some difficulties with that location as well. Unfortunately, the sewer system in, in that area is extremely shallow. So being able to move it around very much is, is very limiting. It is large enough that it wouldn't be able to tuck behind or, you know, on the, I guess, on the library side of, of the cuckoo clock. That's also would be sitting right on top of the water main that runs through the Platsill in that area. So also causes us some struggles. So the only other option would be to move it basically in front of the cuckoo clock, which would really block the, the view and the presentation of the clock itself.
Yes. Okay, here's a crazy idea. Chris, it looked to me like we could put a washroom in the cuckoo clock. Do we already buy the herbaloo or are we still have the option of building a different kind of washroom?
It has been ordered, yes.
Oh, okay. I wonder if it would fit in the cuckoo clock. The cuckoo clock is fire up. The working mechanism of the cuckoo clock, have you looked inside as, was that explored at all? Because it then solves the problem of telling tourists where's the bathroom? It's in the cuckoo clock. Makes it very easy.
Yeah, no.
Serious. If it structurally would fit inside the cuckoo clock and the mechanisms in there are up on the, above it.
Yeah.
Is it worth looking at? Or maybe you did?
Um, yeah, I, I did consider that, to be honest. The structural, the way the cuckoo clock was constructed back in the day, I wouldn't say would support putting something under it. If we were going to venture down that path, it would mean removal and rebuild of something that either an herbaloo could fit under or inside of, that would be strong enough to hold up the clock above it. It's, it's in quite a state of, of poor repair on the inside the clock, I must say.
So, so if I may, Chris, I think therein may lie the opportunity. The Chamber of Commerce is the one that kind of oversees the, the cuckoo clock, I think, as, as most people know. They're in a bit of a quandary right now because that clock is well past its prime. It has become a fixture. It is incredibly popular. It's been down, it was down for about a week or 10 days or whatever, waiting for some repairs. And one of the biggest questions, I was talking to the new owner of our home hardware, and one of the biggest questions that were coming in are the biggest comments where why is the cuckoo clock not working? So I think that it is also a, a homage to our history as, as, you know, as the Bavarian city of the Rockies, similar to mining. I think it has a history that we want to maintain and that, that clock is an important part of it, but it needs to be rebuilt. And maybe there is an opportunity and it's not so much building it on top of, but building it around. I don't know what that would entail as far as details. Clearly, we would have to look into that, but I think this, this may present us with a major opportunity. Counselor McBane?
I was, I was gonna say, I, I agree with that. I, I think we have enough, I think we have enough expertise in town that, that are in the, the timber industry or whatever, to be able to, to recreate this thing, to, to get it rehabilitated to where it, it, you know, where it once was and accommodate this thing if possible. Kent, I don't think that's a ridiculous idea. I think it's actually a really good idea. And so, so I, the last thing I want to do is I just, I, I, I can't support the other, the other option. I just wanted to make that, make that clear.
So just as a reminder, just before we go to you, Kent, that cuckoo clock was, was built without a building permit over a weekend back in about nineteen seventy three or nineteen seventy four. The story is actually legendary, but it was hammered together over the course of a weekend and it's, it's a miracle that it is still standing and working today. It has been rehabbed a couple of times, the mechanism and so on, but it's quite amazing. Scott?
Perhaps I could advertise my summer holidays and you could see what people build when I'm. I understand that's how it happened last time.
That's exactly right, yeah. Kent and then Daryl.
Okay, we may be going in a different direction, but one of the things that is mentioned in your report is that if we did have to take those trees out up by the snack cut in that part, that those trees weren't in the best of health. They were getting big for the site, et cetera. There are a bunch of other big conifers in the Platsill. I know the one at, in front of the library doesn't look very healthy. Are we thinking that in the long run, all those trees are going to have to come out because of their size and where they're located? They're also not fire smart. And if you have embers blowing into town, you really don't want conifers nestled in amongst your buildings. So I, I just, it raised a different issue for me, which was all those big trees downtown and what their long term future is. Do you have anything comments on that, Chris?
Yeah, for sure. You know, obviously those trees are getting quite large as we, we all are seeing in there. There will come a time when those trees will outgrow their stay in their, in their current locations. We do monitor them quite closely and I actually had a, an arborist have a look at the two that are in the proposed location for the herbaloo. Those two seem to be the ones that are in the poorest health right now. They have a lot of exposed roots on the surface of the ground underneath the trees. We're starting to see some die off on the inner parts of the trees. And they're also, they're growing quite close together, which is causing some die off in between the, the two. So yeah, there, it is something that's concerning. We do monitor it every year and, and just, you know, keep track of the health of those trees. And I'm sure eventually at some point, each of them will, will come down in time as they're, they outgrow or, or become unhealthy.
Daryl?
So thanks for this, Chris, and thanks for doing all the due diligence and being realistic about what the infrastructure connection tie-ins are in different locations. The Deer Park Avenue is, you know, if you have to take some trees down that, it, it's, it's a very acidic conditions in the soil there because of the conifers that are in there. You know, who knows what's happening there. It's not a very pretty, you know, the city's done their best, but it's not, in my opinion, the, the trees should probably come out of there anyway and replace them with deciduous trees or something that's going to be more compatible with that spot. My question is, if you use the Deer Park Avenue location, there's electrical infrastructure or tellus or something's in there, what happens to that? Does that stay there?
Are you referring to the, the concrete kiosk that's in there?
Oh, isn't this an electrical? Is it? It's, I don't know who owns it. I've never actually looked that close to it. Yeah, there's something else there.
Yep, it's, it's a piece of old infrastructure. It, it is electrical and, and it's something that's been decommitted quite some time ago, but not removed from underneath the trees. So it, it's old stuff that will have to come out and, and new electrical in to support the herbaloo.
So with that removed, trees removed, re-landscaped with herbaloo there, you know, it could actually, I think it'd be actually quite nice, you know, there's lots of potential for that little spot. It definitely needs cleanup anyway. So I, you know, I appreciate your work that you've done. I think the whole cuckoo clock thing, that's a whole sideways conversation that can go off to new projects, but the reality is to get a washroom into the Platsill, this, in my opinion, this is probably the prime spot to, because it cleans everything up as well.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Oakley. Counselor Kiddo?
I think when we, the grant money came through, we're discussing this, I naively thought that it was going to be in that area of the Platsill. I can't support the, the current location. It's the last area in the Platsill that is not paved and is shaded and especially where the weather like is at the moment, adjacent to the, the water feature there, it's, it's a much needed space. I think we could do a lot better on our signage to get people to the visitor center to use the bathrooms there on Google Maps and from the center of the Platsill to the toilets is a hundred and fifty meters, that's a hundred and seventy meters from down at, sorry, hundred, two hundred and thirty meters down from our place and a hundred and seventy meters from, from the Spirit Rock. So it's not a really large, large space there. So signage could work a lot. I'm just very reluctant to give up any more public space for this kind of infrastructure. In the ideal situation, I think we should be putting this into shop frontage. I'm just thinking even leasing a space, we could get a lot for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over the next however many years. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Kiddo. Have a comment?
Just, I can't.
You gotta. Here, Counselor Dallum.
Struggling, just, okay, having a challenge with this. I think that I agree with Counselor Kiddo. It makes sense to use the existing infrastructure and maybe this would be a solution with the Marysville Rehab, things like that, where there isn't already public accessible washrooms. So.
All right, thank you. Counselor Roberts?
I had one other thought, having been part of the design of the Platsill in the very first place, one of the things that I see getting very little usage, and it's kind of a really cool idea, is the chess area, which is below the fences there. And it's the chessboard where Addie Adgerberger looks after the, the chess pieces and puts them in a box and then he takes them out. And I think maybe in all of the years that I've been involved with that, it's been, I've been five times that I've seen somebody playing chess. I'm wondering if there's a way to maybe do that as a place for the herbaloo. It's sort of not going to have another building built up beside it. It's not going to, you know, the restaurant, it can be, it could be faced away from a restaurant and, and it's got an, an infrastructure already underneath it in terms of the shape of the chess pieces or the chessboard. And it would be a little away from, I, I worry about both of these cases having a bathroom by a restaurant, a, a Platsill area, you know, Plaza, an outdoor restaurant. And there's your garbage can and there's your bathroom. You know, I just, I, I worry about that. Whereas down on that area where the chess is, which is halfway between the library and the, and cuckoo clock, that's a maybe. It's down below the houses. It's far enough, you know, twenty feet away from the store across. There's something for, to be looked at. I don't know about the infrastructure for water and so on.
I think, Chris, you alluded to that earlier, did you not? Could you repeat?
Yeah, absolutely. Unfortunately, there is no sewer infrastructure in that area and we don't have enough grade to get to the sewer infrastructure that is down the Platsill further in front of Stonefire Pizza. Also, particular location is the location that's been selected for the solar e-bike charging station that'll be hopefully built later this summer.
Where you don't need.
Scott, did you have a comment?
Was basically, Chris considered the utility considerations and presented the feasible options.
So a couple of things, I think. First of all, a reminder on kind of why this, this bubbled up in the first place. In fact, it bubbled up a long time ago. This isn't something that has just come up or we're just taking advantage of a. just taking advantage of a, uh, of a grant. Um, it is true, um, the distances are not, um, fatal, uh, I guess Nigel, but if you're a senior, uh, and if you're a kid, um, you gotta go when you gotta go. And there's not always enough warning to get people from point A to point B, which is now that tourism, uh, tourist center. And it's one of the reasons why some of the businesses, uh, thank goodness, like, uh, Spirit Rock, for example, have donated their uh, washrooms as public washrooms is to, uh, you know, help, uh, alleviate that. So, so the, the kids and the seniors and having a more accessible washroom was the original plan. Clearly, a promenade like that, this is a challenge. I mean, it just, it, it's, it's just, it's just a challenge. Now, with respect to, I guess I've got two comments to make. First is with regard to the, uh, to the primary location, Chris. Um, notwithstanding the trees, I'll talk about that in a second, but, uh, the design and the structure of, of this washroom facility, if we were to put it in that location, in my opinion, we would need to build some kind of facade around it. Um, wooden lattice, uh, something that would disguise the fact that it in fact was the public washroom. Um, most of these are put in areas where there's a lot of space, park space and whatnot, where people can move to. Uh, we are in such a tight location up there on the platzel. And I just think that we would need to, um, have it look a whole lot better than what the, uh, what functionally, you know, that, uh, that, that looks like. And, uh, with respect to the trees, I can't make comment on the health of the trees. Clearly, um, I think if people will recall a couple of years ago, we had to take down one of the big trees in the platzel. Um, I think half of it had fallen down because of a windstorm, but these things have a certain lifespan. And, uh, I can, I can almost guarantee, I will speak for the fire chief, that if he were to ask, uh, from an overall, are, are we adhering to fire smart, uh, kind of rules with respect to our own behavior with trees in the platzel, it would be absolutely not. Those two big, um, those two big coniferous trees are, uh, if one of those ever went up, uh, it would take half the platzel with it before the fire department could even get a hose out. It just, it's a fact. And, um, you know, I think that we need to start paying a little bit of attention to our own backyard when it comes to fire smart, just like we are encouraging the balance of the community to do that as well. Um, so those would be my comments. Uh, councillor McBain.
Uh, one, one other thought, Chris, what about the, uh, what's, what's the infrastructure look like in the, um, the alleyway between, um, that kind of runs through just north of the, the first proposed location? Um, what's the infrastructure look like in there? I mean, it seems like, you know, maybe if we could, if something could be tucked away like back in there too. I mean, I know it's, it's out of sight, but I mean, the proximity is, is, is quite good, um, to the platzel. Just curious to know if there's any infrastructure running through there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite sure where you're meaning councillor McBain.
Like, um, the, like the alleyway that runs behind, you know, like where the former credit union is, if you ran all the way down back behind the Kimberley Hotel, like the, I don't know what you'd call it.
Yeah, the alleyway, the back alley.
Yeah, yeah, I know where you mean, um.
I'm just, I didn't know if there was, if there was any sewer running through. I would assume there would be, um, with the buildings there, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that is the existing location of the sewer main, picks up all of the, that side. Um, I think the only, uh, the, the real holdup there is, uh, we really only have lane width in that area. There's, there's no room to, uh, be outside of the lane to still allow through low traffic.
Okay, I was just looking at this. There's a gap between where Burrito Grill is and um, one of the other, the, the main building there. There's kind of a, it's like an open strip of land.
Private property.
Or at least part of property, yeah.
A private piece, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm just thinking of alternatives.
So, uh, let me maybe focus or refocus the conversation. So we've, we've kind of gone around the horn on this, pros and cons and whatnot. The motion on the floor, uh, actually, it's not on the floor yet, but the motion as identified by staff is to proceed with the installation, uh, at, uh, platzel location one. So let me ask you this, Chris. Um, given the conversation that we've had here tonight, have we given you sufficient, um, sufficient cause to kind of take away and, you know, kind of re, rethink what our options might be on this?
Um, certainly if that's what council would like, I can, I can take this back and, uh, and revisit it. Um, I, from listening to what I'm hearing here, um, the changes that are proposed to maybe make this more, um, appealing, uh, would probably also require additional budget. Um, I don't think that we'll be able to achieve, um, more than what we've proposed without, with, within the budget that we have.
So, so fair enough. Scott?
I think it, it would also result in it being outside of the platzel. There, there's limited locations. Um, Chris did his best to go forward to possibilities. I don't think there's a lot more in the platzel. So you'd be looking, I, I think, Chris, what we talked about was, um, sort of north, um, in the Center Sixty Four parking lot, which is, you know, equally as distant as the tourism center.
Councillor Goodwin.
So I'm, I'm thinking that what the discussion may have, may lead to is, uh, a little more exploration of what it would take to rebuild the cuckoo clock over top of and with screens around an herbaloo and put it right where the, the cuckoo clock is. And upgrade the cuckoo clock because it's, you've heard it's not in great shape anyway, but it's an icon and we want to keep it. And it'll cost more than just doing it in the primary location. But it could be worth it, but we don't know how much it will cost or what would be involved. So I, to me, that's another option to be explored and brought back and and then I think if it's between that and location one, we could decide. Ideally, my case, I would rather have it in a storefront somewhere. It shouldn't be sitting out in the platzel, but we don't own a U.K. store.
Councillor Oakley.
Thanks, Chris, for all your due diligence. You've worked hard on this. I support you with, uh, your recommendations here. Number.
Councillor Dallas.
Number one.
I'm gonna pass. I was getting into the weeds.
Okay.
I just want to add that.
Comment.
I, I just want to add that I really appreciate, uh, your comment about let's get rid of those ugly trees under which nothing is growing. Nobody sits there. And if you think about it being shady, the only thing it shades is the storefront because it certainly doesn't shade any of the people in the platzel. So that part, if those trees could go and we could put an herbaloo up that had a little bit of a grid around it or something and have the, the toilet facing onto the street instead of onto the sidewalk, you could put some pretty trees there, some aspens or something, and it could be really very pretty. I think that that is, the only thing is, we just don't want it like a big neon light that says toilet, toilet, toilet. You know, it can be really, it could be put in there really quite nicely, I think.
Okay, so, uh, what I'm going to do, uh, is we're going to put the motion here as it sits on the floor. And we will, uh, uh, we will take a vote on that and pending the outcome of the vote, um, we will either go forward or we will, toss this back to Chris for a plan B, um, in some way, shape or form. Does that make sense? Okay, so the, uh, the motion on the floor is that council directs staff to proceed with the installation of the public washroom within the platzel at location one, uh, identified as in front of one forty-five Deer Park Avenue, as shown, uh, on the plan titled Schedule A attached to the report from the Senior Manager of Operations. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Oakley moves. A seconder. Councillor Dallow seconds. That was a very enthusiastic seconding council. Come on, help, help us out here. Okay, do we have any further discussion? All right, I am going to call the question then. All of those in favor of location one? Uh, councillor Oakley and councillor Roberts.
That's the, the big tree one, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's the, uh, that's the, uh, the big tree one. Um, I am in favor of location one with modifications, uh, as we have discussed here tonight. Um, to be negotiated, I guess, uh, afterwards, but I think that that location one can in fact work. So all those opposed. That is a four-three vote. Uh, the motion is defeated.
We need a motion to send it back to staff or does it just go back to staff?
Scott, what would you prefer?
Uh, no, I don't think we need a motion. We'll just, we've got it on order and, uh, it'll be in storage until we come up with a post.
Plan B, okay, cool.
It may not, uh, may not happen this.
Yeah. Chris, do you have any, uh, any further comments?
Uh, no, I think I've gotten, um, a pretty good idea of, uh, of, of what council's thoughts are on this and, uh, I'll take that back and, and, uh, see what I can put together for you.
All right, awesome. Thank you. And, uh, pardon me. Thanks for all the work on this. Uh, this was not gonna be an easy one, uh, no matter what direction we're going in. Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. So we're on to, uh, new business item number five, which is the check run. Um, the check run in the amount of five hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Councillor Roberts moves. Councillor McBain seconds. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor, that motion is carried. All right, we have, um, uh, we have a number of items here, uh, uh, two, four, six, seven, eight, nine items in of correspondence this evening, uh, plus the late, uh, the late items. Uh, could I have a mover to receive correspondence? Councillor McBain, thank you. And councillor, uh, Kittle seconds. Um, do we have, uh, go ahead councillor McBain.
Uh, just discussion. Um, I, yeah, I, I, I really appreciate the, um, the, uh, the letter about the, the crosswalk from, from Abby. And, um, I, I just got, I just got thinking and, and, you know, especially with the news, um, last year or last week, sorry, from Saskatchewan. Uh, I, I, um, I know this is gonna be up for, you know, discussion around town or whatever, but I, I just, I feel like, um, I feel like something's missing as, as far as, um, you know, our response from, from us, um, as inhabitants here on the, uh, the Tenaha Nation. And, and Mr. Mayor, you gave a really good, uh, speech. Um, you know, after the discovery up in Kamloops. But, um, you know, I, I think, I, I love the, the enthusiasm that was brought forth about doing a crosswalk. Um, you know, that recognizes, um, the, the struggles that Indigenous folks are, are going through right now. And everybody should be going through right now, to be honest with you. And I, and I, and I, I just don't feel like this is enough. I, I feel like some thought needs to go into some, some real recognition in town, whether it's a, um, uh, I don't know, like some kind of practice, uh, dedication or a plaque or, or something, something that just is, is permanent and, and, and it shows, um, you know, some recognition from us who live here. I, I, I just feel that although I, I love the enthusiasm and it's a, it's a great idea, I, I think we need to do more.
So, um, all right, uh, councillor Goodwin and then councillor Dallow.
Um, so I don't, I'm not particularly fond of a feathered crosswalk idea. I'm not sure that would be seen as even appropriate by some First Nations. I, uh, and it, and it's pretty symbolic and it's a pretty small gesture. Um, you know, a lot of this is in the public eye right now because of, of the bodies found or the graves found at residential schools. And residential schools are really, really not a very good thing at all, but they're the tip of the iceberg of what we as colonizers did to all the First Nations in Canada. And if, if we really wanted to reconcile, if we really wanted to show our support, then I think council should pass a motion saying that we will support the Tenaha position in treaty talks. And we will not support the federal and provincial government positions. And even if we don't know what it is, we'll support it because that's where we're at right now. We're trying to resolve the, the issues that have arisen since we colonized here. And the way we're doing it is through the discussion of a treaty. These people are our neighbors. The people in Ottawa and Victoria aren't. I'm on these guys' side. Let's pass a resolution supporting the Tenaha position at the treaty negotiation table and send letters to all the other municipalities in Tenaha Territory saying, you do it too.
Councillor Dallow.
That would mean something.
Well, that puts me in a, a difficult position. I, I would, uh, I would hesitate to vote without it being educated on, uh, any particular issue. So that certainly causes me some concern. Um, I agree that, you know, there are other ways that we can recognize and be supportive of the Tenaha and the Akam. Uh, but we, we still haven't even asked them if this is something they find appropriate or that they would like to have us do. And, you know, if you're, if you're supportive without consultation, that's merely action for no one's betterment by your own. So I would rather continue conversations and be an ally and never be heard or seen than do something that is, um, not taken as intended.
Scott?
Um, I'm not sure if anyone checked the email, like I did after work, but there was an email from Abby. And I'll just paraphrase that she is doing the consultation work and she is patiently waiting to hear back. Uh, these, the people who are, are giving advice on how to honor these children are very busy and overwhelmed right now. It could be some time. Since, well, we obviously have a bit of work to do on perfecting our crosswalk painting techniques for open crosswalks, so, um, I, I don't think a decision needs to be made on this right now. And I, I thank after reading Abby's email. She would like us to maybe put a bit more thought into this as well.
So, um, I guess, um, a couple of things. I completely agree with councillor Dallow. Uh, and in fact, um, um, Scott and I met with, uh, KNC leadership a couple of weeks ago, uh, talking about this very issue. It's not about a response to a specific thing today, but it's about a, building a long-term relationship and how we can best do that as neighbors. And we're looking to, um, get ideas from, uh, both, uh, the Tenaha as well as, uh, things we may consider to, uh, to be appropriate. At some point, we will meet in the middle on what, uh, a particular idea is. Uh, we've met with KNC leadership. Uh, we've got another meeting with, uh, Chief Pierre coming up here in the next, uh, the next week, I guess. And, uh, the purpose of that is exactly as councillor Dallow has talked about. It's let's, let's get a dialogue open here on how we can develop a, a long-term integrated relationship based on not just the past, but the future. And I think it's really important. I'm, I'm frankly disappointed that the media have not picked up on what the Tenaha have done uh, with the residential school experience, uh, by turning it into something so positive that is Saint Ute Mission, uh, today. Uh, they've set up a, um, they've set up a, uh, an education center, uh, you know, in, in the mission that, uh, quite honestly is uncomfortable. It's extremely uncomfortable because it tells what it was. And so they're using, you know, this very positive outcome from that residential school to be able to educate, uh, to heal and to move us all into the future. And I think, uh, I think, uh, the Tenaha are showing the kind of leadership that, um, um, that I certainly admire and, uh, look forward to trying to get some integration ideas, uh, with our communities in place here in the not-too-distant future. So councillor McBain and then councillor Roberts.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on, on my, on my statement. It was no means meant to just, um, you know, come up with something that would, you know, put a Band-Aid on, on this issue and, 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 uh,
I was not taking that one.
Go away. Yeah, just, yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that. I really appreciate the comments from everybody. Kyle, spot on. I mean, if, if, if we don't understand, you know, what's going on right now, the, the only way to, the only way to, to stand is to ask questions. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I know. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Councillor Roberts.
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody that may have forgotten that we actually have a signed memorandum of understanding with the Tenaha where we have said, hey, we're open for business with you and for you and vice versa. And I know Mayor McCormick has participated in a lot of things. I've always been impressed since, since I was a little girl and drove by that God forsaken place from time to time. God forsaken place from time to time, when the, the group decided that they were going to dig in and change that. They have been extraordinarily progressive in how they've handled what that residential school was. It doesn't take away all the long-lasting problems, but they were extraordinarily progressive in doing that. I've participated in a blanket ceremony because they presented it as a way of teaching us. It's a room full of blankets all over the floor that are indicative of the things that happened to them. And I, and you become involved in reading your card and I'll go pick up two blankets as we grab their land and their things away from them. That was an extraordinarily moving experience. It's available to anybody when they, when they present it. And I've also had the opportunity to, uh, see this, the play that they brought to, to Cranbrook called Child of God. And my heart stopped. And it was a play that they brought in, uh, that was from Vancouver. Uh, it was about the, the experience and particularly it was about the experience of a brother and a sister. The sister's the child that disappears. The brother, the brother's the one that loses it over his, it has extended lifetime. That play brought the entire Key City Theater to their knees. Every single person in that place was crying and they were feeling what those kids had gone through. And I think what they have been doing is trying in every way possible to show us their plight and asking us to hear them. And I think our best sta- stage going forward is to say, we are listening. Now what can we do with you? What can we do for you? How can we work together?
Thank you for that, Sandra. Kent, go ahead.
Yeah, man, I put forward an idea of how we could do that. And it's a tangible gesture of support. And I don't think we need to know the details. Because we are in a moral quidmire right now as the invaders, as the people that did the harm. Even if what they want is not entirely in our best interest, they should get it because we, we messed them up. We really messed them up. And so if we look at it purely from a moral, moral and ethical standpoint, the, the burden is on us and we need to say, we support you. I mean, and it will be, it will probably be very good for us as well because they're going to, their treaty will provide all kinds of benefits to the area where they live and we live in that area. So, but having said that, even if it didn't, we should support it.
Thank you for that, Kent. Anything further?
One, one final thing, if I may, this from here.
Go ahead.
So I don't, I don't know, uh, anyone's past transgressions, but I know that everyone sitting around this table take each day and try to make it the best that they can for the community as a whole. And that does include our neighbors. And we are not the sins of our forefathers. We are the here and now. So I don't, um, I don't share the same uh, piece that you do, but we have a generational gap as well. And I just want to recognize that we are doing the best we can now. And people then made choices based on what they knew then. So we're not them and we are doing what we can now.
Okay, so, uh, did you?
I just, yeah, I've changed tact here completely. Uh, but I just wanted, uh, Scott, you mentioned about the rainbow crosswalk and, and perhaps we're going to, uh, perfect the, uh, application of colored paint. Uh, is there any more to know about that?
Uh, not that I know about tonight. I know rainbows are supposed to be bright.
Yes, indeed.
They are ephemeral and disappear as well. I don't think people want us to be poetic about it. They want a lasting symbol. But it's off topic as, uh, much of this discussion is getting to be.
Yeah.
The, the rainbow one sounds like correspondence there.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I was, I thought we were talking about the other crosswalk.
No.
Yeah, we'll do better. Color fast.
Okay, thanks very much. On the, uh, the, the sparks piece, does anybody, was there any number anywhere? Did anybody get a?
Good question.
Um, you know, I, I see a, a well-written request that has no tangible request. So I, I'd like to invite or maybe I should reach out and ask what they're asking for. Because I know I, you know, we, we do support the youth and we have an interest in this as a whole, from what I've seen in the and, uh, I'd like to know what they would like.
So, um, so before we get to the number, um, the question that needs to be asked is given that, uh, their request was for within the, uh, uh, within the, uh, the COVID, uh, restart money is, is what the, uh, is what the, uh, the request was. Whether or not what they're suggesting actually qualifies, uh, under the restart money. Um, do we have a good feel for that, Scott? Or is that something that you could take away?
Well, I did, I did send an email earlier. In anticipation of that question, let me just get in my email.
Sorry.
It is, it is within the, uh, you know, I, I gave the advice to it would be considered part of the
The COVID restart? Okay.
Could be, but that, that will be up to council.
So, so what else falls into that? It, it seems like we've got this, you know, this pot of money, but there's some vagary around, uh, exactly what it can be used for. Is there vagary? Is that just me?
Since, since we're talking about Spark, let me speak to how Spark is.
Okay, please, go ahead.
The city, this was my response, was the city may be able to provide funding to nonprofits, providing core community services, example, programs for vulnerable youth. That, that was listed as one of the ways the safe restart money could be spent. So in, in my opinion, it is eligible.
Okay, Kent.
That's interesting. There, there could well be a number of groups in town that if they knew that would be able to make a case that we should give them money as well. Are you thinking we could have another funding stream or? We have a, we have a policy and a commu- a system of community grants. This is news to me that we may have another pot of money that we could contribute to community groups.
It's the safe restart fund.
Right. No, I knew we have the safe restart fund. I thought it had to apply to city operations. I wasn't aware it could apply to groups outside of the city.
Well, it, it might be a stretch, but I would say, uh, the city doesn't do much to support vulnerable youth. And that Spark could be considered to be, you know, providing for this, these youth on behalf of.
And the food, food recovery program.
There's also, there's, yeah, yeah, but they didn't, they're not asking here tonight. Right? So yes, you should consider whether it sets a precedent for other members. Um, but we do have a fair amount of money sitting in that pot still.
Jim has his hand up.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, just, uh, as additional information, I've got the, the letter that was received from the the province here with regard to that COVID nineteen safe restart grant. And there's a list of eligible costs, one of them being services for, for vulnerable persons. And, uh, in parentheses, it says, for example, persons living with disabilities, mental illness or addictions. Persons experiencing homelessness or other vulnerabilities. Um, the, this money, we received two million eighty-seven thousand dollars as part of the province's four hundred and twenty-five million dollar uh, funding stream to local governments. And, uh, the purpose of the funds was for local operations impacted by COVID nineteen. So I think that, uh, all of the money that the, the city has, has spent of these funds to date, um, there's a, there's a direct tie to COVID. So I think it, it's difficult to tell in this request letter, uh, exactly what's being asked for, but I think that, that, that would need to be a stipulation in order to make it a legitimate eligible expenses is some tie back to, to COVID.
Okay, further, Daryl, go ahead.
I think some of these, uh, you know, now that the, this is going to open up to, uh, you know, much broader, uh, applications to us. But it's going to end up being a, a funding stream, obviously. I, I think that, uh, one of the things the city has an obligation to is to, to, uh, define uh, what services should be provincially funded. So Ministry of Health has funding for, uh, mental health services. They have psychiatrists, they have psych nurses, they have therapists, they have all sorts of supports that have been in place for ever. And I, I think, uh, to duplicate those would not be a good thing. So I think the first thing you do is define where the, if there's gaps in town with, uh, youth at risk, why, why are they experiencing those gaps? And why, you know, why are they not accessing services? What's going on there? Because there are services out there. So, and they're, and they're supported and paid for by the province. So, um, I think that, you know, I think that it's important to, uh, recognize that.
So I think, I think it's also kind of a big deal here to understand how broad the application of this is. Jim has just suggested that whatever it is has to be tied back in some reasonable fashion, uh, to COVID, uh, which, you know, does make sense. Um, so whatever requests that we do get in from whatever not-for-profits, they need to be, they're the ones that need to be able to connect the dots. And we need to provide that direction to them. It says, if you can connect the dots with your operation, COVID, how it has been impacted, then there is an opportunity for some additional funding based on the money that we have left. And it's not a funding stream, uh, it's an amount of money that the, that the city was given. It's a finite amount that will be gone at some point. So, um, so with that, I think what we need, I, I don't remember seeing the either the dollar amount which was mentioned, uh, or the explicit, you know, tie back to COVID versus, you know, regular operations. Why don't we go back and ask the proponent to provide us with that, uh, with that information so that we have something that we can make the decision on? Does that make sense? Sandra?
There's the one general statement that said that eighty, uh, youth suicides in North America increased eighty percent during COVID. That's, that's the only qualitative thing so far.
I, I tried to fact-check that and I couldn't, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, um, can, uh, can we get, um, staff response to that?
Yeah, I just took some notes.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate that. Okay, anything else? All right then, we'll call the question on receipt of correspondence. All those in favor. Not opposed, the motion is carried. And, uh, next up, we have a question period. Uh, this is where members of the public can, can, uh, ask questions of, uh, anything that was on the agenda this evening. Uh, comments or questions, um, and, uh, unfortunately, we don't have a gallery here tonight where we'll be able to, uh, just say, put your hand up. But, uh, similar to the public hearing, we do have a call, a number that you can call in on. That number is one eight hundred seven four one seven one eight zero. And the meeting number is one eight seven zero seven four one five nine seven. Same coordinates as it was for the public hearing, for anybody who wrote those down. And, uh, please, uh, please dial in if you have a question for council. While we're waiting to see if we have any callers, we'll, uh, we'll run through, uh, council items. That's your good one.
Yeah. No, I don't. I just, I actually have one or two items, so I could look you in the eye instead of looking away. First thing is I got an email from B C Hydro. I assume everyone did about, uh, uh, a presentation they're going to do on building out E, uh, EV electric vehicles, charging stations around the province. And they said that if people wanted to sign in, they'd only take three people from each municipality. So I contacted Vicki and told her I'd be interested in attending that. I don't know if anyone else is or if staff is. I wouldn't want to take staff away. It's not clear to me exactly what they're doing yet, but if it involves something that the city could get involved in and have more EV charging stations, that would be great. So that's coming up. Um, and we have had a health-centered society meeting. We did receive formal rejection of our one point two million dollar grant application. I asked for an explanation and all they send you back is the criteria by which they judge without any real indication of what you lacked. Uh, but we did have, we had some great discussions about other issues and we think we're getting very close to learning something tangible about the expansion of the primary care network. It looks like interior health and the other agencies involved are wanting to possibly renovate one of the three wings in the upstairs, uh, health center. But we have no details yet. So hopefully by the next time we do a report, we'll have more.
All right. Thank you, Kent. Daryl.
I'm happy to announce that five out of seven on city council tonight had an epic tour of the brand-new refuges powerhouse. And it was something else. It's, uh, beautiful and I highly recommend, uh, people to go on the train this summer. Go for a tour of that powerhouse, have a look at how they used to power that mine. Pretty phenomenal. Yeah, it was a great tour. And, uh, thanks to, uh, Sandra's, uh, ever-loving husband, Bill Roberts. So make sure you pass that on. Thank you.
Counselor McBain.
To Daryl's point, I was, I was one of the, uh, the, uh, the ones on the tour. And yes, I, I, it is always awesome seeing Bill again and, and listen to, listening to the stories. It also reminds me, uh, you know, how much Kimberley means to me. Um, you know, that, that mine put food on my parents' table. It put food on my father as a child, his table. And, uh, you know, and now I'm part of trying to well, clean up some of the mess or at least maintain some of the mess. Um, but no, I mean, it really, it really does remind you why this town was here. And, uh, you know, we, we, there's, there's a lot of transition going on. People are doing a lot of hard work to try to make it, uh, to make it a great place to live. And we know it is a great place to live, but it's, it's always very important to go back and see the reminders of how you got here. And I agree, they've done a tremendous job. Um, it was, it was nice to get out of the sun, get into the powerhouse. It was actually quite cool, like relatively speaking in there, but yeah, it was really good. Um, I also attended the, uh, uh, the Health Society, uh, uh, meeting, so I'm not going to repeat what, what Kent talked about. Um, we had a, a library committee meeting as well. Um, some of the highlights from that, they did, uh, receive, uh, receive funding from a tech grant. And what, one thing I didn't realize that was really actually quite interesting, even though I have a library card and I usually just go in there to, to um, is they do have, um, technology available and, and for, for people to, to check out. And I thought this was, um, was really cool and especially for, you know, for kids. Um, you know, I think we take for granted, um, I know my kids certainly take for granted the availability of, of technology um, and the availability to use it, um, at, at any given time and way too much time. But a lot of kids don't have that opportunity. And, um, it's really cool that, uh, that our library, uh, has got some more, uh, some more laptops available for, for kids and, well, for anybody to, to check out. Um, so I thought that was really cool. Um, they've also, um, just been in, in lockstep with the, uh, the provincial guidance on how many, how many folks can, can visit. So the library is just staying current with that. Um, and then the last thing was the, uh, the AGM for, um, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. And I believe it's still July, July twenty-sixth via Zoom. So just wanted to pass that along. And that's it for me.
Sandra. All right, July twenty-sixth?
I think that's what I got. I don't want to, I don't want to get it wrong. So as, as people are talking, I'll, um, I'll verify.
Okay, awesome. It's a Monday. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sandra.
Uh, well, it was an interesting trip today. I, uh, something occurred to me while we were going around and there's, there's quite a number of overhead pictures that were taken at different years, sometimes ten years apart. Overhead of the mine and overhead of the concentrator and so on. And one of the things that everyone's proud to show is the improvement that has been done since the mine was closed, the, uh, environmental responsibility that tech has shown, the money, the millions of dollars that tech has shown to try to reclaim the environment in, in a safe and, and, uh, safe manner so that, uh, life can go on here. Uh, it really shows up in those pictures. And I think it's kind of, I'd like to see more people who move here, go look at that. I don't think, they don't, they just don't realize how much work has had to be done and, and been paid for in order to make this a nice place to be. And it, it's really kind of just jumped out at me today how, how And it, it's really kind of just jumped out at me today how, how many people have no idea how, how that happened.
Free ticket?
I had a, had an online meeting with the nature park folks and they're up and busy. They don't have a really big budget, but they do really cool things with budget that they have. There's some water areas that have been difficult to, to hike on. And they have been waiting for and arranging to make some boardwalks, so those are all in progress. Some, some improved signage has been being replaced. And there was also a presentation given by. Nature Park member Goodwin, who has been meeting together with the folks from the province. And the folks that are going to be doing some of the logging. And they've been really, really supportive in, in listening to the nature parks wishes and worries and concerns. And have in fact chosen to, to resituate their cuts and so on. Based on the concerns of the nature park folks. So that was really hopeful, but news, they weren't, aren't just going in there with a big cleaver and disregarding everybody and everything. And so they have recalculated their, their cut lots and so on around some of the concerns that the nature park guys had. And that's good news. So that's all coming down the road over the next couple of years.
All right, thank you.
Oh, sorry to miss the, the mining tour this morning. I might splurge a ticket this summer in the support of the society. Firstly, I would like to make a, admit to something. I got the dates wrong and I watered on the wrong day. I'll admit to it. My neighbors were probably watching and taking photographs. But it did remind me just to highlight, we are on watering restrictions and especially through this weather, for everyone to kind of pay attention to them before we have to escalate. Gives me a ticket, I'll, I'll take it on the chin. But yeah, just to say, it's not all about water. We've got responsibility for people downstream from us as well. So if we can minimize our use, we help the whole basin. And lastly, I had a, an AGM for Kimberly Transit. I thought you thought they were all gone, but not quite done yet. We're still disposing of assets and closing down the society, so we had the AGM on Friday. And we're significantly left in the black. There's, there's money there that they're, as a society, are trying to disperse. And the society is just trying to work out where that would best go to. We're thinking about giving it in the transport vein, maybe a bus route for people who need mobility assistance at the school. Angel Flight was another idea, so we're still working through that, but there will be a celebration for our drivers and, and the staff members of the society as well. We didn't have the ability to get together when it was all going down because of COVID, so we'll make up for that at some stage in July. Thank you.
Great, good saying. Mr. Merrick?
Oh yeah, I just did want to confirm it is on the 26th, at six o'clock.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nothing official to report.
You're kidding.
What's going on, nothing official?
Okay, nice, short and sweet. It's actually great to see, I think you can feel as we go around the table that things are opening up. An awful lot more activity is, is starting up with the organizations that we liaise with, which, which is great to see.
I just want to say that although I didn't make it on the tour today, I have toured the powerhouse in the past and I will. And the one thing that we need to incorporate into the whole mining railway interpreter program. Is that that ore body is only there because of bacteria. Back in the exhalative deposit days, it was sulfur-reducing bacteria that allowed everything to condense and become that lens-shaped ore body. So if it wasn't for life, we wouldn't have life.
Are you, are you trying to divert attention away from the fact you weren't?
Did I miss the thing? No, no, but I think, I think that's really cool that if you go back to why the ore body is there.
I wonder if I can get Bill to.
There's, there's a role of bacteria in making that all happen and making it so concentrated that Kimberly could live for 100 years.
Thanks for that Kent.
I can just hear Bill trying to explain that to the Malaysian people.
Now, the one, the one thing about the tour today that, that jumped out at me is that if Bill ever got sick. Minor Sandra could probably step in and that tour without missing.
Tell you, after writing that book, I know more about mining than I ever would.
So I've got a couple of things to highlight. I had a, I had a meeting with, with the province. About 10 days ago, I guess, to talk a little bit about the, trying to get in front of the population growth that we're having. I think when we get into the fall, notwithstanding some of the incidents we've had, but when we get into the fall and get, get the numbers in place. I think we're, we're in a need to be accountable for, for where we're at. So, you know, I'm making sure that the, that the province is front and center with that. The, as Nigel was talking about the 3%, I also had a conversation with the, with, with the ministry, the tourism ministry. With regard to kind of the dilemma we found ourselves in, which is essentially being held hostage by one person. That, oh, by the way, isn't even a board member. And how that is now going to cost tourists in Kimberly about $60,000. It, it was, it was disconcerting, I guess, and very disappointing. So I had a conversation with the ministry to explain the situation and the fact that, you know, this legislation was put in place in 2007 or thereabouts. And perhaps, given the evolution of the DMOs, it may be, it may be time to take a look at. What that legislation looks like and give a little bit more power to the board. And a little less to the accommodation sector, which is really where all the, the power lies there now. And let's face it, as we have evolved as a tourism community, it's, accommodation is a big part of it, but it's not the only part of it. And we need that money, given that we're a relatively small DMO. I attended the Selkirk Grad virtually. It was, I had an opportunity, I think, as I mentioned last time, to do, you know, a video congratulations instead of usual speech at the grad. But I took the opportunity to actually attend the grad this year and I cannot say enough. For the job that Scott Sherrun and the rest of the staff and student council did in getting this graduation together. It, it was, it was awesome. We were sitting there in front of the, it felt like I was in the room. It was, it was pretty awesome. Pardon me, Bev and I had our second vaccinations last Monday. And just a bit of a warning, everybody's heard the rumors. I think I'm a pretty healthy guy and I had the tar kicked out of me for about 24 hours. All kinds of various symptoms. But I've been told that if that happens, it's an indication that your immune system is responding accordingly. So, so everybody who gets their second vax is, you know, once you're, once you're feeling sick, feel happy about that. You probably noticed that the, the post office facade is getting removed. The building is getting restored as a brick building to its former glory at one of the most important intersections we have in town, most visible. And I want to, I, I want to specifically thank MP Morrison. Because without his help on it, I am confident that we would have not been able to get that done. He took that on and was just like a dog with a bone in getting after, making sure that we got that result that we needed. The new post office superintendent is, is a really good guy. First impressions are that he's a great guy. Chris Petrick is his name and he's moved here from Edmonton. And is looking forward to having the post office liaise with the community a whole lot more than, than what it has in the past. So welcome, Chris. And my last comment is going to be around a lot of the, still rumor. But rumor based in fact about the changes to the ambulance service that we are seeing across the province. B C E H S has negotiated a contract with QP, a union contract that involves. A material change for many of the communities across the province. Some will see no change, but a lot will see some significant change on how services are provided. It's too early to tell exactly what the impact is going to be on Kimberly. It would appear that we are going to be operating under a different model based on. The structure that they are talking about. Whether that model is going to be detrimental or not to the level of service that we have is what I'm trying to find out. I've requested data and summaries from the service itself. And I've been interfacing with M L A Klovchuk on this for the last three or four days because he's got more than one community. That is going to be impacted in some way. So Doug is trying to, trying to set up a, a meeting at this point sometime in the next week or 10 days or so with Minister Dix. To get an explanation, a high-level explanation on what exactly is going on. And whether or not communities that are going to be negatively impacted by this thing have options at their disposal. So it's too early to tell what the specific impact on us is. I know a lot of people are getting nervous. I know the paramedics are not very happy about it here in Kimberly because it is going to have an impact on, on their jobs in some way. How those jobs are folded out. But I would ask everybody to watch it while I track down the facts. And we'll report back to you guys as I am getting the facts and as things are moving forward. Okay, Maurice? Do we have any, any callers?
There is no caller, missed my app.
All right, thank you for that. So we do have one in-camera session to discuss this evening. So with that, I would ask for a motion to move in camera. Councillor McBain, thank you. Councillor Robert Seconds, all those in favor? The motion is carried. We'll take 20 seconds to clear YouTube and.